Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out for our second installment of the 2024 Merrimack High School Activism and Civic Engagement Club Candidates Series. Tonight is our Town Council Candidates Debate. Our questions are gonna be, well, we're gonna have a couple less questions tonight, just so we can get everybody back home before the storm really starts picking up. But I thank all of our candidates for coming tonight. With that, I'll start by introducing our team and the candidates. So next to me is our co-moderator Cadence, and then our timekeeper is Nathan. Our candidates tonight are Nancy Harrington, Town Council Vice Chair, Tom Koenig, Town Counselor, Charles LaFond, candidate, and Nancy Murphy, Town Counselor and State Representative. And we will start with opening statements, starting with Counselor Harrington.
First of all, I want to thank all three of you, and I'm sure you probably have other members too, for sponsoring this tonight. It's very encouraging to see young people becoming so active, so thank you for that as well. First of all, my name is Nancy Harrington. I am presently Vice Chair of the Town Council. I haven't been on the council for several years. We won't count the number. Anyway, I have moved, I moved into Merrimack in 1972. And just to give you a little perspective, there was a population of 7,000 at the time. And right now, we're about 27, 28. Anyway, I am running for reelection for the three-year term, and I know we're going to be talking a little bit more about this later, but I basically have three goals. My goals are stabilize our property taxes as much as possible, to maintain the security and safety of our community, and to maintain the integrity of town government. And I'm sure we'll have more questions later, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Koenig.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Matt, and the rest of the ACE Club for this opportunity, and Merrimack for the opportunity to talk to you about the Town Council race. I'm currently serving on the Town Council and have been for quite a number of years, as Nancy pointed out. I think we've both been on about the same length of time, having been on the Board of Selectment, and then when we transitioned to Town Council. Took a few years off to be on the planning board, but since then have been on the Town Council. Chairman, Vice Chair, Member of the Council, pretty much every position. Served with multiple different town managers, and have been enjoying life here in Merrimack for 33 years. I haven't been here as long as Nancy, but I definitely enjoy being here in Merrimack. And, and my purpose is to continue to keep as much control as I can on the budget in the, in the town of Merrimack, but also to continue to make this the best place possible to live. I enjoy Merrimack. I love it. I, I settled here. I used to move about every four or five years when I got out of college, and haven't moved since I moved into Merrimack. And I, I like to contribute as best I can, and I like to make sure that people are aware of what's going on. So I ask a lot of questions, try to get people to explain why they want something special done in town, and try and find the best way to get them done. So please vote for me for Town Council.
Thank you. Mr. LaFond.
Hi. My name is Charles LaFond, and I'm also running to maintain some sort of fiscal responsibility within the town, make sure that the town government itself stays within itself, and does the things that it's responsible for doing. Things that have been clearly defined in the past, guaranteeing the rights of the citizens, the safety, safety of property, safety of property owners. I see some store owners in the back. I'd say even going so far as the safety of those people, being able to maintain a business, to be able to prosper, to be able to seek their happiness. As some of you may have heard me talking, I believe that, you know, we're cultivators of our happiness. We're responsible for that as an individual. And I believe that the best forms of government are those that enable those individuals to succeed, to not impede them, to not hold them back. But by the same token, you know, we need a set of rules, and we need a foundation to go on. And one of those is property rights, the ability to improve your property and not have to worry about somebody coming and taking it apart, not have to worry about somebody coming in to squat, not worrying about a lot of things. And these days, it seems like we have the same problems that we've seen year after year, and time after time. We can go back through the eons and see these same issues take place. And the one thing that I would like us to do is return to something of normalcy, something of more best practices. And rather than adopting novel approaches to tackling these new issues, we, we sort of build it into our government that we take a more restrained and conservative approach, tend not to get out over our skis, or as four-manatopen woman once told me, to always remember to keep our stick on the ice and our head in the game. And in that way, we can move forward as a town, and we can move forward together and happier. I'm afraid lately, I've been seeing signs that sort of pointing us the other way, where some of our rights have been diminished, where some of that enforcement has been minimized. And I think just a return to basics is, is what we need. And in closing, I just want to add one additional. I would like to say the DPW from last year to this year, I noticed the difference in the drainage ditches, and on the side of the road, even right now as I'm campaigning, walking around, I give a thumbs up to the DPW and all the people over there. I know that's a lot of work. And the improvement I've seen is pretty good. It's pretty much town-wide. It wasn't in just one area. It was everywhere. And it shows. It looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Matthew. And thank you to the ACE Group. You guys are wonderful. I, I love to see youth involvement, and I know we've seen Matthew at the State House representing Merrimack High School and Merrimack Youth really well. Thank you for inviting us here. Again, I'm Nancy Murphy. I've lived in Merrimack since 1986. I have six children and six grandchildren. My background, how I got here, I went to BU, and I graduated from nursing school. Fast forward a number of years, and in 2016, with the PFAS contamination of our community, I got really concerned and really worried, and thought that it was a bigger deal than we were led to believe it was. And ran for election to the New Hampshire House in 2018, and was elected. And then in 2021, ran for Town Council and was elected. So I'm just completing my first term and hoping that I'm invited back by the voters for a second term. I think, you know, my colleagues have spoken well about, you know, why, you know, why are we here? Why do, what do we all want? And I know for me, raising children and my grandchildren here, I want my grandkids to have the same kind of life that my children had, and for this community to be the kind of community that, that they grew up in. So, you know, a safe place where people's needs are met, they can afford to live here. And all that requires that we on the Town Council really pay attention to the budget, and think about young families, senior citizens. And I think this year, that's, we've certainly been able to do that. And I hope that I get the chance to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merrimack voters will be presented with a warrant article to invest in new athletic fields. Do you support this effort? If not, what is your plan to address the rising need for more athletic field spaces? Starting with Nancy Murphy.
Thank you. As you probably imagine, I have six children. We spent a lot of time on fields and on basketball courts over the last 40 years. And my grandchildren have been part of MYA sports as well. I think there's no question, absolutely no question, that we need more sports fields. The issue with the warrant article is the expense to taxpayers. And one of the questions I have is, is this the best way to do it? I don't know that even these fields would be sufficient to meet the needs of, of, of the, the MYA. And our kids deserve to play on safe fields, to have enough fields, and not to, to, to have, you know, have to go to other towns to have quality fields. I would like to see a, a more comprehensive plan, so that we're not looking at this field in isolation, and that we look at the bigger picture. So absolutely no question, support the fields. Just a little worried about, about what that will do for, for the tax impact for, for citizens.
Thank you. Charles LaFond?
I've always been in support of athletic fields and recreational things for the town, always, always, always. This one article, though, sort of gets me, because this is way out on the border with Bedford. And I don't know, in my old times, these kind of places sometimes don't end up the way you think they might end up. And I know it's a very beautiful neighborhood all around it, and there's very beautiful people there, probably only the best people, best families. But I happen to know if you give a place for people to go and have not only sports activities, but like general activities, a big open field on a border like that between two towns, I don't know. I do think we need a comprehensive plan for fields. And I think all of our athletic fields deserve some bathrooms and things like that, even if it's a porta potty. And it deserves some thought. And this one here, like I said, I'm just thinking out loud, this is way out on the border, right on the Bedford line. I mean, literally on the Bedford line. I, I almost didn't even know that that road turned into Liberty. I know when people live on Liberty over in Bedford, I did not, I did not even fathom that you could go down Pearson, and that could turn into Liberty. But all I'm just saying is, in my past, is when you have these border areas like that, I don't know, athletic fields and things, it's, it's, it's a good idea to have athletic fields everywhere, have them well-planned, well-laid out, well-designed. But maybe this one here, I would probably be a little reserved on. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Keegan?
Thank you, Cadence. Let me just come right out and let you know that I'm not in support of this article. And, and I've made that clear as I can in my deliberations on the Town Council. That doesn't mean I'm not in support of athletic fields or athletics. I've had four children that have grown up here in Merrimack. Several of them have enjoyed MYA and soccer and some of the activities. And I, I think the program is excellent, and I, I really do enjoy it. I think it, it adds a very specific part to the town of Merrimack. But as has been pointed out, I think that the cost factor, adding an additional 20 cents to the tax rate on a one-shot hit at a million dollars, when I'm not totally convinced we've totally laid out exactly what the value is that we're gonna get for that million dollars. As has also been pointed out, is that enough fields to, to resolve the problems, or does it just make a dimple in the, in the problem? I think that there was a study a long time ago that said we needed a ton of fields. There's been a lot of population change in the student bases and things of that nature since then. And I think it's appropriate to do a, an in-depth thorough study of what exactly we do need, and how do we resolve that. But that issue hasn't been brought up to the Town Council in quite a few years. We do have an Athletic Fields Capital Reserve Fund. It doesn't have a huge amount of money in it, but it does have some. And we do try to put in some every year. This is an effort for us to put aside money so that we can build and develop fields. There have been talk about building fields near Horseshoe Pond. There have been talk about building fields in various different places in town. We just need to find a, a good, reasonable location to do it. Back years ago, when we were talking about fields, the cost seemed to be astronomical. And a million dollars for two fields is still considered a fair amount of money. So while I appreciate that, that people want more fields, I, I just can't, I can't support this particular article in this fashion, although I definitely support the ability of people to petition articles. I just don't think that it's gonna be the right way to fund it at this time. I think we need to work on a plan to put that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Harrington?
Hi. Well, with full respect to my esteemed colleague, Tom.
Hi. I'm here going to the opposition to...
His opinion. As usual, I didn't turn on the volume. Sorry. First of all, full disclosure, I am the Town Council Rep to the MYA. The town does provide some funds to the MYA, and in that light, we just have representation to make sure that they're keeping the books okay. We have nothing to do with, anything to do with MYA decisions, what the sports they do, anything like that. But I've also been privy to their discussions. First of all, there was an extensive study done 10 years ago, which really was very extensive. It is available for review if anybody wants it. And they suggested like 10 fields. Well, that's unrealistic as well. And to be honest, we as a Town Council have been pretty negligent in not doing anything about it. Now, the priority has been other things. Honestly, I can speak as an individual, when we're talking about monitoring property taxes, there have been a lot of priorities that we've had to take that have not been useful. This has not been on the top priority. And the MYA basically said, you know, we appreciate what you're doing, but nothing's being done. And I don't blame them. So what do they have to lose? But to put through a bond for one year to be able, and we have this property that the town owns, and there's not a lot of property that the town owns, that, yes, it has some wetlands, but it's already been evaluated to a certain extent. The head of our DPW, our department, in fact, made up the plans, taking that into consideration in terms of where Park and Lot could go, where the fields could go. So at some point, you know, you have to go for it. Now, personally, I think it's worth it to me. I have two children that also went through the MYA. I think they're a very valuable organization that have been put on the back burner. And I think for one year, I would pay about $150 for one year for my contribution. Personally, I'm okay with that. That's the decision the town will have to make. So I would encourage people to vote positive, but I also understand, as Tom says, the impact. That's a judgment as an individual you have to make. So thank you.
Thank you. We will now be moving on to our lightning round questions, starting with Nancy Harrington. How long have you lived in Merrimack?
52 years. That's hard to believe. But yeah, 52 years. And as I made a comment, literally 7,000. There was one stop sign, I'm sorry, one street light in the whole town, which was right by Rite Aid, I believe it was. And my favorite town, I don't know. I do like Amherst, and I do like Milford. But I think, my favorite town is Merrimack. That's why I've been here so long.
Thank you. Councilman Koenig.
Do you want answers to both questions? Okay. So I've been here for 33 years. Moved here from Texas, but I was born and raised in Louisiana, and I love being in the Northeast. And I would guess my favorite town besides Merrimack is Portsmouth.
Thank you. Charles LaFond, how long have you lived in Merrimack, and what is your favorite town in, in New Hampshire besides Merrimack?
I've been living in Merrimack, I don't know. I've been living in Merrimack now for 41 years. Moved here in 1983 after my tour in the Air Force. I do love this town. It, it's a lot like the town I grew up in, a very suburban town. Beautiful. My favorite town in New Hampshire, I actually had to get some help on this, is Upin Glen. I love that town. It's, it's got like a Swiss motif, Austrian motif, and it houses Storyland, and Six Gun City, and Santa's Village. And, and I don't know, when somebody says something about New Hampshire, I, I sort of remember that, 'cause I even remember as a child, being driven up there to that area from Rhode Island, and, and visiting that, and the Polar Caves. So, I don't know, those, those places go, go deep within me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. This one, I was torn Bedford, 'cause my daughter lives there. But I think Concord as well. It's the, I spent a lot of time there. It's the seat of New Hampshire government. And I see it as a place where policy can be instituted that can improve lives for, for New Hampshire citizens, especially Merrimack.
Thank you.
What would your primary goal, if elected, to the Towns Council be? Starting with Nancy Murphy.
I think that, for me, that the, my primary goal is to maintain the town and the community that we have. It's certainly growing in size, and times are changing, but I think it's important for us to keep Merrimack the home that it's always been for all of us. And for, again, for, for the Town Council purposes, a lot of that depends on good decision-making around budget, meeting the needs of, of our community. And again, that's senior citizens and young families, and, you know, based on, you know, recognizing that, that everybody's hurting, you know, financially, that there are, we have, we have to really maintain control of a budget that filter out what are needs, what are wants, and, you know, address those, make those choices.
Thank you. Charles LaFond?
I'll go back to trying to instill best practices, high ethical values, things like that. That's what I'd like to do. And I think by doing those things, and, and staying fiscally responsible, and trying to maintain a flat expense in the town, because basically, our property taxes, what we pay, i- is sort of fixed in a way, because there's like an apportionment that we do, and we all know this, and there's a game, and it happens every few years. And they go through and they reevaluate the houses, and there's a reapportionment, and a resetting, and a reconfiguring. And everything comes out to where, you know, our tax rate goes up, and it goes up, and it goes up. I've never quite understood any of that. And I think it's meant to be that way. All I'm saying is what my main goal in life is, is to sort of simplify it. The town doesn't have to be complicated. It's easy. There's some basic things we have to do. We have to go forward. And then there are some liabilities that we have to take care of. Those liabilities are huge, and they get bigger every year. And it seems like we tend not to look at those things. And as I said, I think that if we go to best practices, and we get rid of our liabilities, and we get rid of things that aren't essential, I think we'll start to see that things will get better. The one area that I would spend money in is improving technology. I would improve, like, video. I'd like to have more, like, on what's going on around the town. I don't think we have to have people hopping into a car and driving around. I'm not talking about intrusive video monitoring, but I am talking about smart video. And also, I would like to see the police wear body cams. I don't know why we're still not wearing body cams in this town, in this day and age, especially as I look across the United States and I see the value. Anyways, I, like I said, adopt best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Koenig?
Thank you. I appreciate it. What would I, what would I see as my primary goal? I, I have always been in here in the Town Council seat to try and control our budget, to maintain our open government, and to just continue to make this place the great place that it is to live and raise a family. We have great employees and staff. I, I'm in this position to support them, because they're the ones that helped to make this community operate on a day-to-day basis. Charles was pointing out the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the staff here at Town Hall, all of whom work together to make this a great place to live and constantly working. Our Parks and Rec Department is constantly coming up with tons of, of programming and whatnot that people need to take advantage of, 'cause those are available things easily to be taken advantage of. And unfortunately, it's hard to reach out and communicate with everybody. The town has gotten to be fairly large, 26,000 to 28,000 people, growing, because we've had some apartments come in. But we need to continue to work to, to communicate and to be a community. And, and open government is what I really want to try and continue to, to do. I think that we do a great job of being as open as possible and controlling our tax rate, controlling our budgets as much as we can. And those are, those are just the things that I continue to work on all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Harrington?
Last but not least, as I mentioned before, I have basically three go- goals, and they really are interrelated. And the bottom line is the balancing of it all. I think the Town Council has, and I've been part of that, and I've been proud of that, have been able to really maintain the necessity for maintaining a fairly stable tax base, but also maintaining the resources that the various departments need. Fire Department needs a new fire truck. Fire, the Police Department need other resources. DPW, the same thing. And that involves, because of the inflation that we all live with, an increase in some of the costs. So, but you try to control and balance as much as possible. And I think we've been very successful. The other thing, and I concur with Tom, is that maintaining the integrity of the town governments. I take great pride in, I believe, the town trusts us. And that's really important in town governance. I think we all are available at any time, more than one, more than on one occasion during the meetings. Someone call me. If you have a complaint, we'll have a cup of coffee. You can disagree with me. Help educate me what you want. Okay? And I think that's important atmosphere that the community should have with any elected person. So I would like to maintain that integrity and that transparency of government that has resulted in them trusting us. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. On Election Day, voters may decide to adopt a community choice aggregation plan. Do you support this effort? Starting with Counselor Harrington.
Okay, you should start with Tom Koenig. And the reason I'm saying that is because Tom was one of the Town Councils, along with Andy Hunter, as well as communities' representation. We had citizens as well, as well as administration of the town, got together and evaluated this, and came up with this article. Really, we need to understand, and Tom will probably go into more of the details, but this is an electric supply proposal option. It allows us to take a look at and to receive various plans and proposals, so that we can get a more cost-effective source of energy. Am I doing good, Tom? He's gonna know this much better than, he's gonna come out with all these details. But the point is, that it's giving us the ability to look at the options. Nothing will be implemented until after public hearings and other public input. Nothing will be suppressed. It's all in order. This allows us only to look at the options. And Tom, you can correct me or add on. How did I do?
You did.
Thank you.
So I definitely support this article, and I encourage everybody to vote for it. We need a majority vote to get it to pass. And while it is an opt-in program, or excuse me, an opt-out program, if the town votes to go this way, and we can continue to look into and come up with a plan to provide electric source, the supplier for the town of Merrimack as an aggregate community, then all the people that are currently purchasing electricity by default from, from Eversource would be opted in, and would have to opt out if they wanted to not do that, and wanted to stay with the default Eversource, or stay with their, stay with the default Eversource. Anybody else, like myself, who are already buying their supply of electricity from a third party, would have to opt into the program once the town gets involved with it. So if you're already going somewhere else, you would have the opportunity to opt in, but you would be required to opt in. If you're using the default from Eversource right now, which most people are, then you would have to opt out if you didn't want to be in it. So why do you want to be in it? Because we are gonna be able to go out as a community and buy electric supply from a third-party vendor. And the plan is to only do it if we can get a price better than the default price from Eversource. So while Eversource would continue to maintain the lines, Eversource would continue to deliver the electricity, Eversource would continue to repair any downlines and things of that nature. They still do their job, which is what they do. We could find our own supplier. The town government already does that for the town municipality, municipal buildings and stuff.
and stuff. They already are in a contract with a third-party vendor. And so this would allow us to get together as a community and be able to go out with a large request to, to get a better price on our electricity. So it's, it's hopefully, the plan is to be a cost reduction. And, and so I definitely support it. I think it is good for the community. I think it's certainly good for me because then I don't have to worry about trying to maintain it myself on an individual basis every six months or a year. And we'll have a committee that will be together and a, and a contractor that will help us to get those contracts. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Mr. LaFond.
I honestly don't know what this is. I, I usually don't vote for anything that puts middlemen in between any kind of a transaction that I'm doing. It always causes frictional loss. So I eliminate friction. This looks like friction. I understand this is like a group buy and stuff like that, but there's even talk in this and in some other articles where there, there's fixed remuneration through this whole thing of people who are running it. That's where they get the return to cost on this program. So that means inside it, there are fixed costs that you'll be paying for in this program, which says that if I go to the lowest source already, I'll be paying the lowest. And somebody up here already mentioned it, you know, I'm one of these people, I, I can't take another increase. Not another increase in my medication, not another increase in my electric bill, not another increase when I go to fill the gas tank. I can't take it. I can't take anymore at the food. I look at this and I say, oh, this is frictional loss. So I probably vote against it. I probably sit back and watch.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm in full support, a thousand percent. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the town of Merrimack to lower electricity costs. It's an opt-out program, so any few, you're, we're signed up and you don't like it, you can leave at any point. There are no costs to leave. I see it as a big gain and I'm really grateful to the committee that met to look into, to all the options available and support this. And I, I certainly hope the voters support it as well. I think it'd be, be one way. When we're looking for, for cost savings, this is, this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are now up to our closing statements, starting with State Representative and Town Councilor Nancy Murphy.
Thank you, Matthew. Well, I just, I'm delighted that we had people show up here tonight and that people are watching this at home. I think it's very important for voters to be informed and checking us out on video for people that don't know us is one way to do that. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have been here, shared my thoughts. I appreciate you guys so much and, and always the, that youth are involved, I think is so important to our, to, to our community. I'm hoping that I get the chance to come back and serve a second term and I would appreciate everybody's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Previous town council candidate and current town council candidate and Ethics Committee candidate, Charles LaFond.
Thank you, Matthew. My closing statement is that I know it's hard to see things that are different, but I think this time over the years, as I warned you about the, the energy costs, as I warned you about, about certain things slipping away like quality and safety and common sense. This year, my cry is truth, justice, and the American way. If you lose your way, come on back over. It's defined in the Constitution. It's defined in the Declaration of Independence. We will guarantee individual right and property rights to the citizens of this town. That's what we are here for. That's what I'm here for. And that's what I'm telling you. I will defend that with my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Councilor, Tom Keenig.
Thank you and thanks again for, for being here and having this program for us. I, I think we've covered it all in, in various phases. My effort has always been to do the best I can for Merrimack. I don't have an axe to grind. I'm here trying to do the best I can to help out Merrimack and, and move forward. I'm very proud of the staff we have. I'm very proud of the job that we've been doing on the town council. I think we've done a tremendous job holding the budget as much as possible. Some people argue constantly that we hold it too much because they want to hire more people in, in various different departments. And that's okay. We can and, and we will when we can afford it. We want more athletic fields, but again, it's an affordability type situation. If we keep doing all the things we want to do with the ambulances and fire trucks and police and police cars and athletic fields and, you know, libraries here and there and things of that nature, our budget would be just totally skyrocketing right now. So while it's, it's, everybody has their wants, there's also a need to worry about our needs. And those are the things that we've been focusing on. I want a lot of those things as well, but I know that we all have limits on how much we can spend. Things like the Aggregation Committee question to save money are ways that we're trying to bring forward what little bits we can to, to reduce the cost of living in Merrimack. So I encourage you to support Tom Keenig for town council to get me the opportunity to continue to work for the town of Merrimack. Thank you.
Thank you. And Town Counselor and Town Council Vice Chair Nancy Harrington.
And truly, last but not least, I would like to respectfully request that you give me one of your valuable votes for the town council. I hope my years in the town council have provided you with a comfort level regarding my character, my priorities, and my effectiveness. I want to thank Kayden, Matthew, and Nathan again for providing this opportunity for the community to hear from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out to our, I know it was a shorter program, just so everyone is able to get home before the weather really starts kicking in. As a reminder, Election Day is April ninth and there are three, four choices and there will be three counselors elected on April ninth. Thank you everyone for coming out and have a good night.
Thank you.